We'll call the joint meeting of the special city council meeting and special county joint commission meeting to order for today. Appreciate everyone being here for the special time and certainly working with all the different schedules. If we could just make sure that our cell phones and electronic devices are on silent or on vibrate. We'll try to keep the distractions down to a minimum as we are on a little bit of a timetable today. Roll call for the city council, please.
Evans?
Here.
Janser?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Pittner?
Here.
Padugula?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Sitma?
Here. Commissioner Rosstead.
Thank you, Mayor Sitma. We'll have our roll call from Mrs. Hammond.
Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Commissioner Peach?
Here.
Commissioner Webler?
Here.
Chairman Rosstead.
Here.
All right, Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Rosstead here, you had asked for a brief, brief time period right at the beginning here, and then we'll get into the presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted a chance for, because our, my fellow commissioners had some questions, and they wanted to be reassured of the decisions they were making. So, and I thought it might be best if, since this was such a huge decision for the city and our Ward County, that I wanted them to have a chance to fully have explanations given and have all their questions answered. And since this is a 20-year deal, we want to make sure we're on the right track. So, I especially want to have them be able to ask questions freely and make sure we're, we're ready to go if we decide so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And for that, I think the best way to probably start the discussion is getting the information from Epic. I believe that they are here with the information. That way we can do an information intake and then open up the discussion for either negotiation or Q and A with Epic on that. If you just hit the little gray button right down in front, there you go.
How's that?
Perfect. Thank you, Blake.
Thank you. Blake Nybacken with Epic Companies. And first of all, I'd just like to say thank you again to all of you for your time today. I'll try to get this right. Members of council, commissioners, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Chairman, thank you. I really appreciate your time. We feel this is an important project and appreciate your consideration in this. I do have just a few things that I'd like to share today. And so, I sent out a video the end of last week. I'm not sure if anyone had a chance to take a look at that or not. If you didn't, I would encourage you to take a peek at it. It's less than about 10 minutes, but it's something that our company had put together over the last couple of years. Just a little insight on who we are and some projects that we're working on. And with that, I will roll through this as quickly as I can. So, just a little background on who we are as Epic Companies. We are North Dakota Group. We are based out of Minot and West Fargo. We've got about 60 employees, and currently we're serving nine communities throughout the area. We're in Detroit Lakes, we are in Morehead, we are in Fargo, West Fargo, Grand Forks, Jamestown, Bismarck, and Minot. That little blip in the middle, that's one of the projects that we did in New Rockford, a little small affordable housing project that we did a few years ago with one of our partners on the construction management side of things. Some of the projects that we've done in the community already were not new to the area, but I just wanted to make sure that we made mention of a few that you may recognize, or maybe you weren't aware of, projects that we were involved in. So, again, I'll run through these pretty briefly. Blue on Broadway, probably the most recognizable one, pretty visible as you're driving through town, five-story building that was done in conjunction. We got some NDR funds. We went through a competitive RFP process for that. About a $10 million project overall, 42 housing units, some new commercial space on the main floor. And so far, we've got a couple of businesses on the main level of that building. Couple other projects, Park South One, that's right by the South Hill complex and the Rose Hill Cemetery there. Our first phase of that was constructed a few years ago. Again, that utilized NDR funds. We got some North Dakota Housing and Finance Incentive Funds, Governor's Funds for a regional stormwater project that also benefited the Park District there with the regional stormwater detention program. And then it leveraged private investment to bring about 30 new units online in the old convent that are affordable for the next 20 years. And then there was also 10 market rate units in that as well. The next project that some of us were involved in was the Beaver Ridge Plaza. That one's up on North Broadway. I think one of the first mixed-use projects in Minot, done at, I think it was the old county shop site right at the bottom of the hill there. MSU Foundation owned that site, and we built that in conjunction with them. And it was just recently, within the last year, gifted back to them. We're currently finishing up our Park South Phase Two project. Those are single-level townhomes. We're building 22 of those around the Park South Phase One project. That's done through our nonprofit arm that some of our members are part of, Essential Living. Those are slab-on-grade townhomes, about 1,200 to 1,300 square feet, attached garages. Again, going to be affordable in the city of Minot for the next 20 years. This is a project where because of some COVID-related delays and cost increases over the last couple of years, this project was originally 100% financed through NDR funds, but we've come up with about $1 million of additional financing on the private side to bring that project to completion. And so, that's another project that we're doing and that a lot of us are proud of. A lot of us are, Minot is a hometown for us, and so, we're, we're proud to be a part of projects like that. And then a couples that aren't, a couple that aren't in here, but before we get to the M-building, I just thought it'd be worth mentioning, you know, some of us were involved in bringing the new Minot Country Club online after the flood. Some people, including Todd Burning, you know, were involved in protecting the grandstand when that was flooding, along with the rest of the city. A lot of stuff was flooding back then. But, you know, as, as community people, we were involved in the Minot Rising fundraiser. Again, you know, community projects that many of us have been a part of throughout the years, which is one of the reasons why we want to do the M-building project. Like I stated, this is home for many of us. We feel like right now, we have the right team in place, and with this TIF being involved in the project, we feel that we can make this project possible. Don't think it's going to be an easy project by any means, but we do think it's going to make a substantial impact. The TIF allows this project to have what we feel is a modest return and bring it onto an even footing, similar to as if we were going to do a greenfield development where a project doesn't have asbestos remediation requirements or any demolition requirements involved. And like I mentioned, you know, this is a hometown passion project for many of us. You know, our interest in revitalizing downtown areas has shown throughout other communities. We've been involved in downtown projects in Morehead, in West Fargo, in Fargo, and we're excited about the opportunity of doing this here in Minot. To talk about the process a little bit, you know, the century code really dictates the TIF process. And in this case, because it is in the jurisdiction of the city, that was the way we went about the process. I guess going back to December of last year, you know, we did have a few meetings that we invited members from both the county, the city, the school, and the park district. We brought our attorneys up, and so, we wanted to go through this process kind of in detail. They're available again today on the phone to answer any specific questions about the TIF process. And we're happy to answer any questions that any of you representatives may have about the project itself. This project, we feel, is a great opportunity to bring a building. You know, at its current assessed value is only bringing in about $9,300 in annual property taxes. And upon the completion of the TIF, that'll be about $250,000 based on our valuation of the project today. I think that's it. I'm happy to answer any questions that, that there are.
Appreciate it, Mr. Nybacken. And at this point, I think this is just a great opportunity to open the floor for any questions for Blake or for any of the other folks from Epic, as this does have to stay direct to the M-building funding discussion, as the special meeting statute says in North Dakota. So, at this point, if anybody has any questions, this is the time to ask.
Ward County Commissioners, please join in or ask questions freely.
And I guess if there are none, I would be happy to propose a question if, if that's possible. You know, in light of the, the vote not to participate in the TIF, but to have this meeting and potentially negotiate participation or discuss other possible ways of the county being involved in this project, that the difference of the county participating or not in our TIF model was about a half a million dollar impact. So, would there be a TIF proposal or our participation level that the county would be willing to participate in or find acceptable?
My name's John Peach, and I'm one of the county commissioners that voted against the TIF project. And I think part of the issue is, and part of the reason that, that it'll maybe be here today, and I'm just speaking for myself right now, is that I think there's people that are under the understanding that we don't quite understand the benefit of what you're trying to do. And that's not true. And that we don't understand the financial situation of what is trying to be accomplished here. And I would say that's probably not true either. The, I think it's important to get the building up or any blight in any area, it's important to address it. But where I'm at is the way that it is addressed. Basically, you're, you're stating that for X amount of time, there'll be, and what it boils down to is a certain amount of tax relief for this building and the people that are investing in it. And that the taxpayer really isn't out anything because in the end, you'll have a viable building and it'll be paying all kinds of taxes. And that's kind of an interesting statement. What would happen if there was no TIF and it was financed the way a lot of other private enterprises are financed? And that's directly through the investor that's paying for them. So, within a two-year period of time, your project would be completed, and the city would be collecting its 240-some thousand dollars worth of tax right off the bat. And the bottom line is, whether it's the city or the county, park board, or the school board, at the end of the year, there's a number that they have to have in order to run each of those entities. And that figure is almost carved in stone, you know, due to a budget. So, the budget that they have to come up with is X amount. And the way that it's come up with is the real question. How do we come up with that money? And what I don't like to see, and I don't use the word lightly, is people that aren't willing to pay their fair share of taxes. Because if you look, and if this program was set up by the state legislature to take care of blighted areas in communities, what happened in 2011? We had 4,300 blighted areas in the city of Minot. And I've been told, and I think the way it happened, I did some checking on this, but the homes themselves were devalued. So, some of the homes were devalued as much as 90%. But as soon as those individuals put improvements and stuff in them homes, they paid their fair share of taxes. And a lot of them wound up with a home that was devalued for maybe six months, but before February showed up and the tax evaluation was formed, they already reconditioned their home to about what it was before. So, they saw zero tax relief. So, now we're asking these same people that didn't get a whole lot of help then, but my understanding is they did from the city of Minot. They got free permits and free inspections, but that's a long ways from 20 years of tax relief.
Yeah. If I could try to address that, the first part of the question, this, without the TIF, this project simply would not move forward. For us to pay the full taxes on what we're projecting as the assessed value and finance the additional 2.7 million that we've requested through the TIF, that's about a 200,000, that would cost us about an extra $200,000 a year to try to finance that. And right now, the way we've got the building modeled, its cash flow is about $50,000 a year. So, without the TIF, it's in the red by about $150,000 from the start, and we wouldn't move forward with the project that's projected to lose $150,000 a year.
Well, at that rate, if the numbers are that close, I get a little suspicious too. If it isn't that financially viable, then I'm a little concerned also as to whether or not the project will really cash flow at any time, even with the TIF and the additional financial assistance from the tax community.
Yeah, we're showing about a 10% to 12% return on investment. That's a comfortable number for us, but that includes the full value of the TIF.
Mr. Nybacken, perhaps you want to address the question about the, the taxes that you'll be paying throughout the TIF?
Yeah, the, the full amount of the taxes would be paid every year. It's just that they would be directed to, we're proposing a 90-10 splits on the taxes. So, the 10% that would go to the taxing authorities would effectively triple what you're getting from that building right now. So, take it from 9,300 to over $30,000 is what our model is showing. So, that, that's tripling the tax revenues annually throughout the term of the TIF that's paying down the bond to take care of the abatement and the demolition. It also pays for that full 2.7 million dollars. So, we are paying that the whole time. And then, once the term of that TIF expires, we continue to pay that full 250,000. But once the TIF expires, then that just goes into the taxing entities as annual property taxes.
Yes, I think I understood that part of it.
Okay.
It was paid back. 90% of it, if I'm correct, would go to, paid toward the bonds?
Correct.
And 10% would go back toward the taxing entities.
Yep, correct.
Yes, and we're on the same page.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Feldahl, would you turn your microphone on?
You talk about the proposal and your cash flow projections in this. Who did those, is that your company's projections, or did a third party review this and agree? Or how's that process been handled?
Both, yeah. Our, our company made the proposals. So, we did a pro forma based on our, our estimated project costs. And then, once we started meeting regular with the city, we started putting together the TIF model that we thought would be viable for the project. And then, my understanding is that they're working with a, a third-party consultant that's reviewing not only our internal financials on the project, but also on the TIF model itself.
So, the third party was hired by the city then, or how was that done?
To answer that, I would probably bring up our finance director. Mr. Lightfield.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission and the city council, the city has engaged PFM. They are our financial advisors that we use in bond sales, and they are reviewing the analysis that was done. And what we're looking at, or what we're most concerned of, is both ends of that model, that first of all, that the assumptions used in the model aren't overly ambitious or, or rosy, and, you know, that they're realistic, that the project will generate enough cash flow to service the debt for the bonds that are sold. They're also looking at the other end of the model to show that there is a need for the financing, that if this project, you know, if the assumptions are accurate and it would develop enough cash flow to fund it without the need of the TIF, that's of concern to us as well. So, they're just verifying that the model reflects accurately what was presented and that it would fit into that, that narrow window where it justifies the need for the TIF financing, but still has enough cash flow to service the debt.
So, along them lines, then, how much of that information is public?
That information, I believe, would all be public.
And going forward on any, as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, this is public funds when we start, these are still considered tax dollars, being redistributed back to the debt against the project. So, all of this is considered public money, correct?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, I believe that that statement is accurate, yes.
So, there's always a variance, as I know, in projections for these kinds of things. Where does this come in when, when it's talked about, we have to have this package here, it doesn't flow? There's got to be some degree of variation in this. And when I made the comment about not being aware of those things, have those documents been public?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, the, the model, the information that was given to us was submitted by the developer. And there's a number of different assumptions that are used in that model. Interest rates, the term of the financing, you know, the rental rates that they'll get once the project is completed, occupancy rates, or vacancy rates in this case. A portion of the project is going to be condominiums that will be sold. So, you're assuming a sales price and the cost of sale, a carrying cost. There's a number of different variables that are used in this model. And that's what we're looking at for the third-party consultant, is just to verify that those assumptions that are used in the model are reasonable. No one, no one of us can guarantee that it'll be exact because of the number of different assumptions and the number of outside influences that come into play with those calculations. But we're just looking at other outside experts that have experience in this in various parts of the country to verify that those assumptions are, are within the parameters that would be reasonable.
And the reason I ask this is, is the question Mr. Nybacken proposed was, is there any other options or offers from the county? I believe that's what you asked. And I'd be uncomfortable giving that, not knowing those things. Maybe I'm out of line to ask for that, but that's our job as elected officials. And considering this is taxpayers' money, I think, I know there's been a lot of meetings and negotiations going on for a while on this, as I understand it, but...
But I'm not comfortable making any proposal until I'm comfortable with those things, if you follow what I'm saying. So, thanks.
Mr. Nybacken, if you could, just elaborate a little bit on the build time, completion time for the project, Big M, start to finish, if it were to move forward as proposed?
Yeah, we would look to get going as soon as we can. We've got an asbestos remediation plan, demo plans already in place. Design is tracking nicely. I think that would come out later this summer. So we would try to start as soon as we could, probably in June here. And I think we were looking at a 14-month to 16-month completion. So, you know, if we got going this summer, we would look to be open before the end of next year.
Thank you. Other questions on the M project itself, or comments? Yes, Alderman Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Blake, talk about, or tell us, talk about other projects, other TIF projects that Epic has completed, and how has that process gone?
Sure, so we've done several different TIF districts. We've done some in the city of West Fargo. We started the downtown redevelopment program there along Cheyenne Street, where we did a P3 that included some TIF dollars, purchased some older buildings, you know, basically out of commission, 30, 40-year-old buildings, and redeveloped their, started the redevelopment of their downtown area. I think that's gone very well. So that was a case where we've done it with, you know, a similar process here where blighted property is not really contributing to the community anymore. We've also done it where it's creating a public benefit. We developed a project further south on Cheyenne Street in West Fargo called The Lights, where we worked with the city of West Fargo, the county, and the school district to create an entertainment district. We did a TIF of, I think, about $14 million there. Did a 370-space parking ramp. We did about a $7 million, one-acre plaza that's got a permanent stage. It's set up for hockey with artificial ice. It's got a splash pad for kids to play in the summertime. We did a TIF in the city of Jamestown for a housing and mixed-use project right on the University of Jamestown's campus. So, yeah, we've done it in several different communities. We recently did one in Grand Forks for a development similar to The Lights. And, yeah, they've gone well.
So, looking at all the projects that Epic has done, I saw a list here about a week ago. There were probably, I don't know, 20, 30 or more projects. Do you have a complete price tag on how many projects, and really, how many have failed?
I don't know the number of the first one, of how many total we've done, but I'm not aware of any that have failed. So I think we've got a pretty good track record.
Thank you.
Other questions on the financing aspect?
I have a question.
Yes.
And it's actually just about the remediation. I have it on.
There you go.
There we go. It's about the remediation. Do you know what process they're going to use yet? Are they going to remove it or encapsulate?
I think it's going to be a combination.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, just curiosity.
Yeah, I think depending on the parts of the building, some areas, it's, I believe, cheaper to encapsulate it. Depends on what you're doing with the area, but I think it's going to be a combination thereof, both.
Thank you. And your, the North Broadway project, which was something you held for quite a while, was there a TIF on that, the Beaver Ridge?
I don't believe so. No, I think the first TIF in Minot was the one that we did in conjunction with Blue on Broadway. And that was just a shorter five-year deal to reconstruct First Street from 16th to 17th.
Thank you.
Questions, Alderman Pittner?
Thank you, Mayor. Blake, when it comes to financing these, how do you guys finance them outside of a TIF and bond sales? Private investment?
Yep, we would raise private investment for the amount of equity that we require, and then we would work with probably a local bank to finance the balance of it.
Okay, so, and again, a question, but I think we're seeing the tools that are necessary to make one of these projects move forward. And Commissioner Peach's comments is, why doesn't Epic move forward with financing a project like this, just like every other investor or developer? I think if that were the case, and it was that, if it were that easy, it wouldn't have been vacant for 20 years. And I think that's the point, is that it takes a collaborative effort to make something like this. And for an investment like this to work, it is, it is a fine line that has to be walked with investment and with taxpayer dollars. And I don't think anybody here takes it lightly, but we also understand that there's tertiary benefits of moving forward with a project like this, too. The commercial space, it'll be leased out for sales tax dollars, for people to work and play and invest in that area of Ward County. So, again, I think there's... It's a very intricate, it's not as simple as just taking out a bank loan. And it's not as simple as putting a house back together when it comes to asbestos and reconstruction of a building that's been neglected for 20 years. So, again, I just wanted to make those comments public.
Mrs. Wepler, did you?
Yes, I do have another question. Thinking about the condos that are going to go up there. Will they, usually condos pay separate taxes. Will it be a part of that building? Will they be paying separate taxes then, or will it... So, once those condos are up and running, eight condos, I think?
Yep.
And those, they will be paying taxes?
Correct, yeah, and that's all in the model. We had the condos accounted for as part of the model, yep.
And they pay those taxes then, because it's part of your facility, they pay the taxes? So they'll be taxed directly by, through the county, giving it back to the city? So there will be eight condos. Do you know what the value on those are going to be yet?
It'll depend on square footage, yeah. So once we know our final construction budgets, and then it'll depend on, you know, if people do anything special with them. But, yeah, it'll all be based on square footage.
So there will be taxes coming in over and above the TIF, the 10% that would be coming back?
Yeah, well, we've got those accounted for in the model already.
Okay.
Yeah, but until, until those are sold, we're paying them as part of the project. And then, it basically just transfers ownership, and they continue to pay the taxes on those. My understanding of it.
Then I'm not sure that I'm clear. Then I'm not sure that I'm clear, then. So I'm hearing you say that they will pay their own taxes as owners, and here comes Mr. Likefield.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Wepler, that would be included as part of the increment, that increase in value. Mr. Nybacken is referring to it being included in the model. The value of those condos and the tax revenue is considered part of the increment that would be divided 90-10.
And also, on the TIF, it will still, even if they're owned under certain people, it'll still be set up in the system to split the money between the TIF and the regular disbursed taxes.
Alderman Evans.
Is it accurate to say that sort of developers and businesses across the state are looking to what we end up doing with this TIF? My concern is, you know, there's a message being sent, right, to the business community and developers in the state when, you know, locality, it doesn't, you know, try and work and make it as accommodating as possible, you know, for that. Is there chatter you're hearing among your colleagues and others at the state level?
Yeah, I would say that's a reality. You know, people want to know how the process is, how it is to do business in a certain area. And so, yeah, I think that's a reality with this process, yeah.
And how, has there been any investor reaction to what's going on here? Like, are investors, like, nervous about, you know, investing in Minot with the message that, you know, local government isn't going to, you know, perhaps be helpful?
I'd say we've heard a little bit of feedback on that so far.
Okay.
You know, because we have had other areas where it's gone through smoothly, and there's been community buy-in all the way around. So, yeah, I would say there's been a little bit of feedback on that, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions, discussion?
One more question. So it's my understanding that should the county, well, the county voted not to participate. And it's my understanding that that can still move forward without the county participation, because the city and the schools have said, yes, they voted that, yes. You know, the recommendation is they're going to move forward with it. So the county portion, I heard you say earlier, is a half a million of the full project. That 20 years, spread over that 20 years, is, the county's portion is a half a million?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
County commissioners, any further questions at all?
Mr. Nybacken, I might just circle back one last time to the four-to-16-month completion timeframe. Looking at when it is complete, in approximately 16 months, understandably, that is when the project is complete, you're starting to occupy the building. And if you could, what would be the estimated value of that building comparative? Well, what would be the value of that building at that approximate time?
Yeah, we're projecting it to be approximately $15 million at that time, versus its current, just over half a million dollars.
And if I could, Mr. Bucken, if the project doesn't, isn't successful, but the building is complete, there is still a $15 million asset at that point, it is presumable that Epic then would look for other means to find success in this with the investors and with the TIF still part of the equation, is that correct, or?
Yeah. Yeah, and I think, if we get to that point, I think there was a question, maybe, within the last couple of weeks, too. I don't think there's a, I don't think there's a... I don't think the project starts and doesn't complete. I think it either happens or it doesn't happen. Like, I don't think we get $3 million into it and the asbestos is gone, and then there's this easier project for somebody else to take on. I think it's, the project either happens and we take it to completion, or it doesn't happen at all.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Yeah.
If I could, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Question related to that, then. Is that contractually agreed to, do you know? With the city holding the bonds and...
Yeah, I would assume with our development agreements and everything else that we would have in place with probably two different banks, because not only would our main financing bank be involved, but the Bank of North Dakota would be involved. So, yeah, I would say we would be obligated in several different ways to bring that project to completion.
See, for me, that's one of the concerns. Like it or not, I guess, I would like to be comfortable knowing those agreements. I understand the city's the one holding the ball on this. I think I understand that, should anything go awry, or we have a plan that doesn't perform as projected. Those issues, like I've said to you before when we've talked, have been my concern. And knowing those contractual agreements and how they affect which is taxpayer dollars, I guess. So when you say, who is the person that understands that, I guess? With those assurances contractually?
Yeah, well, we've got John Shockley on the line. He's kind of our attorney that helps us through any of these bond-related processes. So if I could invite him to attempt to answer that a little more eloquently than I could?
Mr. Shockley, unmute your mic, please, and if you'd bring them on screen, perhaps. Go ahead, Mr. Shockley.
Thank you, Mayor, yes.
Hang on two seconds, we're going to turn up your audio on our end.
Okay.
There you go, continue, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. So, my name's John Shockley, and I serve as TIF counsel for Epic developers on this project. And to answer the commissioner's question, we have been working on a developers' agreement with the city of Minot. Contained within that developers' agreement are requirements that Epic complete the reconstruction of the building. And then, we've also submitted to them what is referred to as a minimum assessment agreement, which means that no matter what the final construction of the building looks like, there's a minimum assessment that is levied against the building in valuation, so that that supports the city's ability to repay the debt service on the bonds. To be quite frank, the incentive to complete the project is in that if you don't add value to the property, you don't have sufficient funds for the TIF to make the TIF work. Plus, with the requirements that the city has imposed of having the minimum assessment agreement, the developer would be stuck paying higher taxes on a building that would be partially built out. So the incentive, the city has properly allocated the risk to the developer to incentivize the developer to go ahead and get the construction of the building done. I think maybe, just fundamentally, it's important that currently, as the building sits, it is not generating a very high level of taxes. With the way that the TIF is being proposed to be split, a 90-10 split, you have the, all of the taxing jurisdictions will continue to get the base value of the taxes, plus they'll get an additional 10% of the increment. So immediately, they will be seeing an increase in the value from what it is today. And so, it's somewhat unique, and a lot of TIF districts will have 100% of the increment going to pay off the bonds, that's not being proposed here. Rather, it's a 90-10 split, so it's kind of a nice incentive for each of the taxing jurisdictions. From my perspective, this is one of those TIF projects that's really fundamental in that you're using the TIF to abate environmental and other issues associated with asbestos. And that's really what the TIF is being used for. It's not being used for any type of special incentive or anything. It's just literally to abate the existence of a condition on the building which would otherwise make it very difficult, if not impossible, to make it, you know, even market to redevelop the property. So happy to answer any questions about the agreement. We submitted our drafts to the city, city's legal council. I believe the city's legal council has been reviewing and commenting on them, but pretty standard provisions that require the developer to complete construction on the building.
Thank you, Mr. Shockley. Any questions from his points of viewer statements? Our finance director came up, perhaps, for a little clarification on the developers' agreement.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, I would like to add too, and Mr. Shockley can correct me if I'm incorrect here, but one of the other items that we have discussed during this process is the backstopping the payment of these bonds with the ability to special assess any shortfall against the property. So that adds another layer of security, especially when there's other outside lending parties involved. What presumably would happen is if this project went south and there wasn't enough revenue from the increment to service the debt, it would be special assessed against the property. Again, if it wasn't paid, eventually, the county would become the owner of the property. As we all know, typically, that doesn't occur when there's another lender that has an interest in the property as well. So it gives us some additional security that that debt would be serviced over time. And just a couple of other items that I want to point out, because I'm not sure if everyone understands, some of the language in the TIF statute, that there's only certain things that this funding can be used for, and it's acquisition of the property, the demolition or alteration of the property, or installation of public improvements, and that can include a lot of things, including roads, streets, sidewalks, parks, those types of things. And then, of course, servicing the debt and any costs associated with the debt. So there's only certain things that this type of funding can be used for in these projects, and that's why it's limited to the amount that it is that was associated with the demolition in this project. They weren't able to ask for the entire amount. They weren't able to ask for the entire amount because it doesn't meet the statutory guidelines. One other thing before I go too, and Marissa can correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe that the taxes on this property were at least two years delinquent before it was purchased by Epic, so. You know, there was some risk that the county could have been the owner of the building prior to Epic stepping in and buying the property.
Thank you, Mr. Lakefield. Further questions or discussion? Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, Mayor. Just curious, and I don't know who this question before, and if the answer's known, what would it cost to tear down the building if it did come back to the county?
I would probably even have to look to our engineer, and about $6 million? Is that a rough estimate? Okay.
And just clarification, that would be taxpayer dollars, I would pay that?
If it were to go back
To the county?
to the county.
Okay.
That would be my understanding of it. Alderman Padagula, and then we'll go to Olson.
Yeah, if worst came to worst, hopefully it won't happen, and it costs $6 million to tear the building down, would that be, go exclusively toward the, from the county, or would it be split among all the taxing entities?
Our finance director likely could answer that, but I believe it would be amongst the county itself.
Normally it is.
Okay.
Normally, when we've taken over, it's been totally on the county, at the county's expense.
Okay, thank you.
If that happens.
I, I don't have a question, but just a comment. You know, we're dealing with ARPA dollars at the county right now, and we recently approved $131,480 to tear down Wilson Apartments in Kenmare. Because that's a blighted property that's been sitting around. Now, perhaps if there was a TIF earlier for someone to take that over, perhaps that could have been a viable building. But we're looking to tear down a much smaller building in Kenmare.
Lisa.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I have one comment and one question. My comment is, I sense around the dais that everyone is kind of trying to get the answer to worst-case scenario. What, what happens if everything goes wrong? Well, I think we've just lived worst-case scenario. We've had a blighted building in our community for over 20 years that has been an eyesore. And, you know, if you live or work downtown, that's not a proud building to, to show off in our community. So I, I think we've already been there. I think we're on the road forward and, you know, and partial thanks to Epic for paying the back taxes and getting that back on the tax roll and, and moving forward. I guess I'm looking at process now. We've had approval from three of the taxing authorities. The county did vote it down. Is there a chance that there is going to be a reconsideration, or where are we at so that we know how this project is gonna move, if it's going to move?
I can maybe answer that. We meet our, me and county, our county commissioners meet tomorrow morning at nine o'clock, and probably, at least from my viewpoint, unless one of the dissenting commissioners makes some sort of a motion, it, it probably will stand as our decision, was it, when we voted three to two to not support this.
Mr. Stewart.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Commissioners. To answer the question with regards to process, so the city has followed the state law and the process as far as notifications, those types of things. The school board has taken action to support this effort. The council has yet, has not taken action. That is on your agenda for the next council meeting, at the May 16th council meeting. So the council has not taken any official action on it. You had a presentation outlining the parameters of what this would look like as an education piece, both for you and the public and our partners within the community. But the council is not taking any vote or action on it. That will be on your agenda at the May 16th council meeting. So that being said, the county exercised its right to deny to participate, but also you exercised their right given by state law to request negotiation with the city, which was the purpose of this evening's meeting. And, and I agree, and I want the county commissioners to be on the same page and have their questions asked, answered. But at the same time, I haven't heard any negotiation. I haven't heard any proposal of any terms that the county would be willing to accept in supporting the TIF. Whether that's a 10-year agreement, is that a change in the split, is it a 50-50 split, or is it a 10% to the developer, 90% remains? That's the purpose of the negotiation here, and I haven't heard any of that this evening. Moving forward, should the commissioners continue to hold to their previous decision of not participating, which is within their rights, the school district and the, and the city can move forward. And in that situation, the taxes captured would be coming from the school district and the city. The county would get 100% of their taxes. In other words, the $450,000 that we've proposed be participatory in the $2.7 million of bonding, the county would retain that. And so then the city would either have to consider other alternatives. By state law, we could go up to a 25-year time period at 100% tax abatement, or TIF. I don't know that's what we're interested in doing at this time. But the council and the school district have to make a decision whether or not they want to move forward without county's participation at that point. So that would be the process at this point.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
And if I may, to answer Mr. Commissioner Feldahl's question earlier about the availability of the records as far as the work for PFM, we can't provide that to you yet because we haven't yet received it. Our hope was to receive that today. But as soon as we receive that, we'll be happy to share that with both you as the commissioners, as well as the, the school district as, as participating partners.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Stewart. And given the, the timeframe right now, I think that that might be a really good opportunity as no decisions are expected, anticipated at this meeting. But are there any other terms that would be considered from the county to the city to the schools for consideration on a TIF?
Commissioners? Well, it's kind of in our court, so.
I don't think we've discussed any.
Would, would you, are you suggesting we discuss it tomorrow at our meeting?
Fuck you.
Well, we can put it on the agenda, but it will be up to the dissenting commissioners to, to make a motion. So. But I'd be glad to put it on the agenda. That's not a problem. Okay?
Is, the question. And maybe it's, supposed to get documents tomorrow possibly pertaining to some of the questions I asked. Are we still under a deadline that was alluded to earlier, or, like you said, the city council hasn't formally taken action on this yet? What's the timeline here?
Mr. Stewart, I might look for clarification on the timeline on that, if the county were to reconsider or propose other parameters.
I'm not aware of anything in state law that outlines a timeline when the county's exercised its right for negotiation. So, the county commission has requested the opportunity to negotiate with the city, which was the intent of this meeting. So until you have, you give us an indication of terms that you would like to see, I think at that point, the city would have to determine, due to time sensitivity and those types of things, whether they take action and move forward with the county's previous action of declining to participate in the TIF. We're kind of in a gray area here because the action that the county commission took was to decline participation in the TIF, but also to negotiate. I would have expected one or the other. The county says, we're interested, but we want to negotiate. We don't like the terms. But you took both actions simultaneously, and there is no clear direction, I believe, in state law regarding a timeline if the county's taken action to negotiate with the city. So I would leave that to the council to decide how long they want to have the table open for negotiation.
Mrs. Whapler.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, so it's, it's my understanding, I mean, the reason that action had to be taken was because a letter was sent to the county commissioners, and action had to be taken, or not to. If, if you didn't want to do anything, then it's a buy-in. If, if you don't respond, you buy in. And it's, you know, the commission as a whole said, no, we're not ready to do that. But there were words said about negotiating, so I appreciate the time here. I, I don't know that, it sounds like not all the questions have been answered, but I'm, I'm hearing that there's that possibility. But we, like you, don't sit and, have opportunity to sit anywhere except here and, and talk about these things at our commission meetings. So I appreciate the opportunity to hear it again, learn more, ask more questions, and hope, you know, you know, we'll just have to see where that goes from there. But thank you.
Mr. Mayor. I guess.
I did have one more thing to add. I didn't necessarily take this meeting as an opportunity to come and negotiate with the city of Minot, although it is our understanding that what we learned from our state's attorney was that each entity had that opportunity to do so. It doesn't have to be a collaborative effort between all parties necessarily agreeing, but each one could maybe work out their own type of proposal. But mostly what I came here today was to, to listen and to see if there was something here that would possibly change my mind because I, I didn't want to leave it on the table the way we left it at the last commission meeting without giving everybody an opportunity that wanted to say something in favor or against. I'll gladly take any input, and that's, that's the real reason I came here today, wasn't necessarily to negotiate with anyone, but to listen to what anybody had to say that might sway my mind one way or the other. And I guess it's, I'd like to thank everybody that gave us the opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Mrs. Whapler.
If I might, one more. I guess I, I did hear in some of our discussions in commission meetings that this is not something available to all taxpayers. And I take issue with that because this is something available to all taxpayers who are interested in converting a blighted building into a building that is for use. And I just heard some other items also that qualify for this, infrastructure, roads perhaps, with the, with that property. So it absolutely is available to anybody interested in converting a blighted building, which I use that particular issue because that's what we're talking about in this building.
Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Dave, just so I can be clear, or maybe Harold, we're hoping PFM to get back to us maybe tomorrow, if we, not today, sometime this week, with crunching their numbers on this project. And then my follow-up to that would be, and maybe to John, and maybe some of the dissenting voters, Commissioner Feldahl, if you saw those numbers and they proved what Epic was presenting was factual, and, and this is a necessity to make this project go forward, I guess that's what I guess I was hoping to get out tonight, that if, if the facts that were provided and that information was provided, are we open to moving this project forward? If this is, if this is a philosophical difference, then I think we need to go a different direction. But, but if it is that, hey, we need these, we need these tools for this project to be successful, I want to make sure that you guys have those, and if that's what you're waiting on, and that's what you need as far as information, then I want to make sure we can get that to you. But timeline on that?
Mr. Lakefield.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, and Alderman Pittner, we should have that report any day. The latest information that they were looking for was regarding how comfortable the city was with the assessed value used in the model. And we had the city assessor doing some homework over the 20-year period. As we alluded to earlier, the developers also agreed to a minimum assessment agreement, which impacts that slightly too. So I think it was just a comfort level with what the assessed value of the building would be with what was used in the model. So I think we've covered those bases. There are a couple of other housekeeping type of questions for the developers as far as the organization of their company, and I would anticipate we would have that formal report here any day.
Okay, thank you. And I guess that, my, my question would still stand to the commissioners, if, if that's the information you're looking for, is that, is that what we need to, to do to make an informed decision? Is that the rest of the information?
Mr. Feldahl?
For me, yes. I can't speak for everybody else here.
I, I would just ask if, when you get the report, if, if you could let me know, and I'll, I'll let my commissioners, fellow commissioners be aware and, and perhaps maybe even come in and see you and see if, if all our questions can be answered at that time also.
Absolutely.
Just to be clear, was that, are you waiting for the full package, or are you waiting for assurances on the valuation part of this?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, and Commissioner Feldahl, we're waiting on the, the formal report from PFM.
Complete?
Yes.
Okay.
We've hit our hour mark. Any final closing questions, comments?
I'll just say thank you for agreeing to meet with us, and this has been a good meeting. And hopefully we can make sure that all our commissioners are satisfied with the, before, and we'll look for a final decision very, very shortly, or if there's a reversal or an agreement of what we've already decided. So we will be in touch.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it's been a pleasure. I made this comment before we started, but I'm not aware of a joint meeting that has ever taken place before, so I'm proud to be part of it. And my final comments is I hope we can find a way to yes on this one. The big M, I feel that this is her last leg, the last chance. So, thank you, everyone, for being here. That is the end of our meeting. We are adjourned.